Good evening, Byram Hills. I would like to call this, a motion to call this meeting to order at 7:36 PM. And that's the March 11th, 2025 Board of Education meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Alright. Uh, there was no executive session today. So let's ra- rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is a flag of the United States of America. And to our public, for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any comments from the public?
I just have one comment. Regina?
What's the score?
It was. What's the score?
Two minutes, alright, seventy, seventy-two fifty-three with two minutes to go, but that was one minute ago. So, I got a text to pack the bags.
Pack the bags. Alright, hopefully, our boys' basketball team is going to Binghamton for the-
Regional finals.
Regional finals.
Awesome.
On Sunday.
Is it, it is Sunday? This Sunday?
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Jen. Um, any revisions, Kelly, any revisions to the agenda?
Nope.
Okay, so, let's move on to consent agenda. Item six point one, personnel, seven point one, CSE, sub-CSE, and CPSE recommendations. And eight point one, business.
Not you.
Okay. Uh, can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Great, thank you.
Okay, so, um, I just want to point out that we had two teacher resignations for the purpose of retirement. Mike Chuni, art teacher at Byram Hills High School, and Anna Marie Nardi, math teacher at HCC. Um, decades, both of them have been in the district for absolute decades, have created the departments that they're working in. We look so forward to sharing in the accolades about you in our retirement celebrations upcoming. But I just wanted to take this moment for our public and community to say that, you know, this is, this is exemplary of a Byram Hills teacher. Somebody who comes into this district and devotes their career to supporting this school community. Um, and we have people, we have a few people here tonight who are here to present, um, who have been in the district, whether they're coming from another place, or they've been here before, left and come back, or been in another place and come here. But you know, that the, the tenure, um, and the time period and the devotion to this district is pretty extraordinary. So, Mike and Anna Marie, we look forward to celebrating you and just wanted to point out to the community tonight that we are going to be missing you as the next year's roll out. Um, Nancy Sarah was, is on here also for world languages, but it's not for retirement. That her retirement happened already, we have to fix that. She already retired, this is just a resignation. Right. Okay, and that's it.
Great. And that was a good segue to item nine, our special report, budget hearing two.
Yes.
Special guests here tonight. I turn it over to Jen or Tim or whoever wants to go.
Oh, I just want to start by saying thank you so much for coming. It's important for the board and the community to see our leaders in our major, you know, areas, uh, within the district to be reporting out about, whether it is about your actual budget or about more of the themes of the things that you're trying to achieve and the work that you're doing on a daily basis. Um, we have Kevin Guidati here from technology, Mark Beja, uh, who is our director of technology. And you have a really long title. I'm trying to remember, professional learning. Yes, Director of Technology and Professional Learning. Mark Beja, the Director of Fine Arts. And Jill, the Director of Special Services. Do you have something else attached to your thing?
Services.
And health services. See, I told you, Mike, it's really possible. So what happens when you come here is you get a job title and then more things get added to your title. So, Mark, beware, he's coming. But thank you sincerely, the three of you, for being here tonight and talking about your budget and what it is that your departments do in helping to guide our district in three very important areas.
Yeah, so we'll be discussing that tonight. And then, uh, the following meeting on the 25th, we'll talk about athletics, operation and maintenance, transportation, and we'll talk about revenue. Um, and then our final, uh, proposed budget presentation on, uh, April 8th, our budget adoption on the 22nd, and then our final hearing on May 6th, and the budget vote on May 20th.
And if anyone from the community wants to come out and talk publicly about the budget, of course, you could always call us or email us to ask us questions. But March 25th, budget hearing three, is the last time for public comment about the budget.
Absolutely. So just our budget, the budget increase next year, three point seven three percent. Our, our presentation from last week, last week had a little more detail in terms of how we got to those percentages. Uh, if you want to review that, there's also a budget document on the website, uh, for further review as well. So without any further ado, I'm going to turn it over to, to Jill to just talk a little about the special education program next year and, and some of the, uh-
Thank you. Alright, thank you, um, good evening. Um, so if we turn our attention to the, to the slide, um, for the 25, 26 school year, uh, the salary increases are based on staff needs and contractual agreements. Uh, there is no change in the equipment line. There's a decrease in the contractual and other line, which is based on a reduction in budget for tuition and settlements. And then we have a slight increase, uh, in the BOSI services line, uh, which is based on, um, projected students and, and the outcome of what their needs are. Uh, but overall, our increase is one point six percent budget to budget for special services. Um, and we have, uh, a lot that comes under us in special services. Uh, not only students with special needs with five, with IEPs, but also students that have 504 accommodation plans. Uh, and we also, um, manage any of the health and medical needs of any of our students in the district as well. Uh, based on the 2025 October snapshot, there are currently 329 students who are classified and have an individual education plan in the district. The district's committee on special education currently has 16 students who are placed in out-of-district programs. That means the CSE, the Committee on Special Education, makes those placements and referrals, uh, which includes currently three residential placements. The district also has students who attend our programs here. Uh, and they come to us from other or neighboring districts, and those neighboring districts, uh, pay tuition for the students. Currently, we have two students coming to our, our schools, uh, that fall into that category. We generally receive referrals continuously from neighboring public school districts. Uh, and sometimes we send referrals to, uh, school districts that are in the consortium with us as well, uh, as we search for out-of-district placements and programs for students, uh, that we cannot provide, uh, programs for in the district. Uh, we also, um, make sure that we provide programs to our students in the least restrictive environment. That means it's as close to general education as possible with minimal program and supports. We're continuing to provide professional development to our teachers in the integrated co-teaching program. And also, uh, work with a fellow for Orton-Gillingham for reading services for our teachers. Um, the, uh, special education teachers, school psychologists, social workers, or related service providers continue to work closely and provide, uh, supports and services to our students uh, to increase their independent skills and to help our students become, uh, self-advocates. And we look, uh, to provide as much as possible. I know one of our classes is going, um, to Disney soon, uh, on a trip, but we focus on independent skills for our students and post-secondary outcomes for them. One of the things that, um, had transpired, uh, over the last year and a half, uh, New York State's funding, um, really changed. We were always required to provide support to students through the school year in which they turned 21. So if someone turned 21, like, let's say in May, the funding and, and our responsibility ended in June of that year. Um, what has happened is that New York State has moved that a little bit to, uh, funding students up to the day. And we, as a district, are funding students up to the day before they turn 22. So if a student happens to turn 22, uh, let's say in November twenty, 23rd or 24th, we would fund their placement and program right up to the day before that, which would include transportation. Um, and there is no funding coming from New York State for that right now. And we are fortunate that we can provide those services and supports to our students, which includes some students that are residentially placed. Uh, we do have, you know, a handful of students that are what's considered ungraded. Uh, we do have students that are in some programs at the high school that would be in the program in the high school for five years or six years. Uh, but we are fortunate that we can continue to provide those services and supports to our students, so just wanted to say thank you.
And the issue with that, the, before the 22nd birthday, is we may have students from our school who we need to place somewhere.
Yeah.
And there are kids sitting in that placement, but their birthday is the end of September. And so they are taking up a seat in a placement somewhere, and at the end of September, they're no longer going to be there. But we're looking for a placement for a child for a year.
Right.
So it has not only messed us up, but also the schools that these kids are attending.
Yes.
Because they can't just be take, they, they can't really say, well, you know, we could take you out of October 16th when this student leaves. So it's really difficult for them to manage, and it's difficult for us because there are no seats available. These seats are being taken up by other kids, even though they're leaving in a short period of time.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's kind of like a, it wasn't about that.
It is a challenge, yeah, yeah. But that's it.
Is there any, uh, I know from time to time where we think about whether or not there are any other programs that we can have to keep more kids in district to the extent that it makes sense and we have the expertise and we have the resources. And I guess it depends on the number of kids in, in, that need a certain service. But at this point, is there anything obvious or for the most part, um, the kids that are outplaced, it just makes sense that they're outplaced, given that it just doesn't, it, it, we just couldn't provide it here, you know, we tried. And I guess the same question across the Sound Shore, right? Because we could send, um, students to other, um, neighboring school districts, and I know we do. Um, are there any big movements afoot in terms of just additional programs being added anywhere?
So we are always looking at that. Um, you know, Dr. Lamia heads up our, our Sound Shore Consortium group, uh, with the special education directors. Uh, we continuously all really struggle with students that have, uh, and exhibit extreme, uh, behavior challenges and/or those students that have anxiety. But we have seen a, a high number across the Sound Shore group of students that are younger, uh, that are really creating, uh, difficulty for us to find placements for. Um, BOSI's is aware of that. Um, so it, it is a challenge for us, uh, but we do look to see if we ever have, like, three, four, or five students that we can start our own class. Um, we do always look at, to do that. And we also, um, in special education, not only, if it's like a first and second grade cohort, we could potentially mix it if it's a special class. We could do multi-grade special education classes, and we certainly have that at the high school right now. Um, so we're always open to, to look to have new programs.
Comen Hill, too.
Yeah, Comen Hill, right. We do have a class right now where it's multi-grade, and we're looking at our preschoolers that are coming in because we can go up to a 36-month age range for those full-day special class programs.
So Jill, the nursing staff will report under you?
Oh my God, yeah.
I have no idea.
You don't even know. So if there, if there is a child on a bus who requires a nurse on a bus for a health-related issue, which is important, and a nurse should be on a bus. If that nurse is sick and can't be there, Jill gets a call at some ungodly hour that the nurse can't be there. She calls a staffing agency, she tries to get somebody else who's going to be coming. If nobody can come, Jill contacts the parents to say, we don't have a nurse. The parents are discussing with Jill whether they're driving the child. I mean, it is like, I mean, that, that happens every week, right? Every single week.
Yeah.
We have not only our nurses in each of our buildings, but we do have nurses for other kids with special medical needs that are actually in school that are,
Right.
have to be tracking those kids for the sake of their health, right?
And then when they're, when field trips come, which it really starts to pick up from this time of year to the end of the year. So we have students that have medical conditions and they need to have a nurse on a field trip, so we can't-
Or need a nurse on a field trip, period, besides the kids.
Can't take our nurses out of the schools because they have to be there for the other children, so. We are very fortunate, though, because we have really expanded our number of parents who are in the district that are community members that have now become substitute nurses, so.
Who are substitutes.
We are really fortunate about that.
Oh, that's fantastic.
Yeah, I know, this is really good.
Jill has a rolodex of people that she's on trips in.
Yeah.
I have to say, I love the way you are integrating these kids into the community, too. Like, I love going to Taza and seeing them working there. And these kids that I've known since they were little are now, like, having full-on conversations with, back and forth.
Yes.
And you can, like, they're, it's, it's such a great program.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, it's great, it's wonderful.
I love when I see the kids who are in the program at the high school who are socializing together and going to, like, the middle school play. And, you know, like, this is, this is a community because all of these kids are not all from here.
Mm-hmm.
Right? So these are kids who are now reaching out to each other, they live in different communities, they're getting together for social.
Mm-hmm.
Well, you know, that's hard, and any day.
Yeah.
You know.
Yeah, it's wonderful.
A student in our district, so it's really wonderful.
And our entire high school, you know, all of the staff and programs, they've embraced our kids over the years, so.
Yeah, seeing the turnout at the, those Unified Games.
Oh, the Unified Games, yeah.
I know, it's awesome.
It's wonderful.
That's a great new program, too, yeah.
Yeah, it is, it's great, thank you. And thank you for your support.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
We appreciate it.
So I'll turn it over to Kevin.
Thank you. Um, I know Jen started by saying thank you for being here tonight, but I actually really enjoy talking about the budget. So I'm happy to take any questions.
That's why we brought you back.
Um, I, I really do actually look forward to talking about it. Uh, somebody once said to me, show me your budget and I'll show you, uh, your values. And I think that's really true. Um, and so there are a couple of things I want to highlight tonight that aren't necessarily reflected in the numbers that really do demonstrate our value and our commitment to, um, improving, uh, continuous improvement. So I'll go down vertically down the list here. Our salaries are due, too. We have some contractual increases that we're obligated to make there in the salary line item as well. Our equipment, we're keeping flat, and, um, just hold that in your mind now as I go down here. That our, our, that line item is for equipment that's purchased directly, um, from us to other vendors, so we're keeping that flat. And we've minimized that over the years. Um, our contractual, we have a minor change in. And I want to talk mostly about the BOSI services line, which is the largest of our lines, but it's also flat, um, year over year. Um, that does not mean that there's not significant changes. The topic, uh, within the technology realm is always cybersecurity and data privacy. I came and spoke in May, I think, about some of that. And there are some, there is one really important change that we've been working on for, uh, about a year now, um, that is reflecting in this budget. And I just want to, um, I want to explain a little bit about how we filter traffic. As you know, and as I mentioned in May, school districts are becoming increasingly a target for cybersecurity threats. We're considered high-value targets. Because when it comes to personally identifiable information, which is what nefarious folks are after, we're chock-full of it. All school districts are, you see that in the news all the time. Um, and what we've been working on for the last year or so is a change to how we are monitoring the traffic that's coming into our district and how we are, uh, equipping ourselves to respond to that. Um, up until recently, we had a physical device that would monitor traffic coming into our district, and it would provide us, um, summary logs and reports of any traffic that's anomalous. And then we had local staff members here who would review those reports. And then we have procedures that they would follow, um, to take the appropriate actions on those reports. Um, what the trends are showing us in terms of cyber attacks is that school districts, aside from being high-value targets, also have very predictable schedules. And so, and which are typically publicly available on websites. And so the trend, one of the trends we're seeing is that school districts are being attacked during times of vacation and over brings. And so if we were to try to use the old system that we had with a physical person internally looking at those logs, those people are not here 24 hours a day, 7 days. And so we've been working with our partners at Lyric. Hello? Um, we've been working with our partners at Lyric to-
Lower Hudson Regional Information Center.
Thank you, Lower Hudson Regional Information Center, to start a, um, a security, um, system. It's actually a vertical team, which is mirrors the way that we're supporting all of our operational technology. There's a whole team of people at Lyric supporting each of the different facets of our technology infrastructure. And now there is one specifically dedicated for security and monitoring. Um, it's called a SOC Service, which stands for Security Operations Center. And we now, reflected in this budget, will have 24 by 7, 365 days a year monitoring of our network. The other nice operational benefit to that is that our processes, like, if you go back in time to our old system, if we identified something internally that was anomalous behavior, uh, we typically would have to immediately involve our partners at Lyric. Uh, because they are also our ISP, Internet Service Provider. And so there are some actions that they would need to take and some actions that we need to take as well. By leveraging this vertical team, um, one, it makes the cost aidable as well, so we're leveraging, uh, aid. Um, in this case, you don't see an increase in the overall because, um, we are no longer purchasing the, um, uh, the, the service that goes along, the support that goes along with the physical device, we don't have that anymore. And we were able to find some other savings in some software and things like that that we're no longer using. And so the service is added at no additional cost to the district, it's a reallocation. Now that the support will be provided by our partners at Lyric, it kind of short-circuits our response a little bit, makes it a little faster because they need to get involved anyway, and now they are the folks that are responding as well. So it's a much faster response time that we have, um, as well. So, um, we do very much value saving security and all that, but I wanted to highlight that because you might look across that BOSI's line and think, oh, everything's remaining the same. But it is very much not remaining the same in that very important, um, aspect. Um, and then the, the last line there, materials and supplies, you see, uh, a, a small increase there. That is, uh, reflective of a change in the way that we're managing printing within the district. We've released, um, the control of some of our printers as well. What, one feedback that we got from our students, especially, I'm at our middle and high school, is that it's very difficult to find places to print assignments that they need as well. Typically, we used to do it in the library. This actually came to a head when we started the Learning Commons Project because we had to move printers around and make sure that students were able to access them. Um, and we have a new system, um, called, um, I don't know the product, but, uh, we have a, uh, we have a new system that does allow students to access our printing, and we're anticipating a slight increase in our, our print costs as well. But we think that it's well worth it because it allows students to access our technology in a lot, uh, more efficient way. The other nice part operationally on that is that, um, that also comes with monitoring as well. And part of our long-term plan is to think about how are we replacing our, what's our equipment replacement cycle? And printers are one of them. Um, like, for this year, for example, we have, uh, a number of different printers, all of which use different print cartridges, and we're looking at a more efficient way, uh, to manage all of that as well.
It's too soon to know what the language is going to be in the governor's, but in the governor's proposal for the cell phone ban.
Yeah.
And if it's going to even come to fruition. But if it does, the original language had a ban on laptops in addition to iPhones and tablets and everything else, in which case we would probably have to issue Chromebooks, I would imagine, or some device to all of our high school students, which right now, I don't know what percentage of them bring their own device, but I'm guessing it's very high. Is that the high most? Is, is that, will that, is there room in the budget to do that if we need to? Is, how, maybe we already have stock in-house right now, or how do you think about that potential?
Uh, yeah, we're monitoring that closely. In fact, Governor Hochul put out a release today, or there was a news article just this afternoon, maybe three or so, three o'clock or so this afternoon, which is partnered with, uh, Common Sense Media as well. Um, unfortunately, the governor's allocated only 13.1 or so million dollars across the state to help support that. And that's specifically allocated to help districts, um, manage, um, the phones.
Yeah.
Yeah, and the specific language in the proposed legislation is, um, unsanctioned use of Internet-enabled personal devices. Um, so the question comes down to, what does the term unsanctioned mean? Does a bring-your-own-device process constitute sanctioning of the use of that, that device? That's still, um, unclear.
Right.
Um, so to the heart of your question, is there room to address that within the budget? And the answer is yes. And, and the, not to go too deep into the details with that, but, um, if you recall, last year, I, I talked about a slight change to how we're, we're purchasing our equipment, uh, because the interest rates were very high then, and we were looking at, um, our installment agreements as well. Um, so this year's budget, we're holding back on that, uh, i- installment agreement as well. If we need to implement that in order to get us the buying power that we need to fulfill our obligation to be compliant, we can certainly do that. But we hope we don't have to, but we do have the ability to adapt if needed for that.
Got it. And hopefully, yeah, there shouldn't be any availability issues, I would think. But there are going to be a lot of schools scrambling, get this really dense.
Yeah.
Um, correct. Um, uh, you know, I'm, I'm a member of a number of different organizations, and this is definitely all a buzz. Uh, my phone's actually buzzing right now, probably with more emails from other technology directors, um, in the region. It's something that we're all contending with. Um, and th- there still isn't a lot of clarity around whether or not our BYOD program would or would not be sanctioned.
And we've done everything we can to talk to the legislative delegation just about leaving power to the local decision-making bodies to try to come up with reasonable approaches rather than some draconian approach that is going to have unintended consequences that nobody thought about but are serious. And one of them is bring your own devices, especially for students that are dealing with large data sets and all the rest, so.
But that was in the joint memo today, right? That they were saying that, that, that schools should be responsible for figuring out a plan that helps students.
That'll be great.
Correct, yeah, they have, they've been very clear about the schools have the ability to create procedures internally that will help them be compliant with, uh, with the new, um, regulations. Um, again, the, the big lack of clarity there is certainly the, um, uh, the use, the word sanctioned. Um, and then one other thing we're thinking about with that as well is, you, you mentioned, and you're absolutely correct, many of our high school students, um, choose to bring their own device. We offer a device to all of our students should they need it. So we do have some devices in reserve, it's not as though we'd be starting from zero. We certainly are well, well-prepared to handle that if we need to. But a question that we're asking ourselves as well is, is if we were to be required to provide a different device, are the devices that we're providing up through grade eight sufficient to help our students do what they need? We don't want any impact on the education that they're getting here. I'm thinking about things like our science research kids, for example. Or you mentioned kids who are, you know, compiling large data sets, things like that. We, we, we're also thinking about making sure that it's not, it's not really just about putting a device in the kid's hands that's not their own, it's about making sure that device is matched to the educational demands. So that's definitely something we're thinking about as well.
Awesome, that's great.
Yeah.
The storage that they're talking about for the phones, can they not just tell them to keep it in their bags?
Yes, we can for now, I think.
Yes, we can, we can, yeah. Districts are looking at different, um, things, and I think the, the intent of that is for Governor Hochul to just support some schools that choose to not go that route for whatever reason.
And it depends on your school community.
Correct.
Our school community will be responsive to keep your phone off and away. And if it's out, it gets taken away and you suspend privileges or whatever. You know what I mean? Like, I, like, for, for us, it seems, I don't know that we would ever get to the point where we'd be purchasing something for these kids to, like, put it in and carry around, just-
Why would we want the liability of taking their, keeping their phones?
Well, it's not even taking their phones, it's, they hold their phones, and it's in some sort of locked device.
They have those at concerts and things, there are devices.
Yeah.
As we had it lock up and you'd lose your phone.
I don't know that this is what we need here.
Yeah.
We haven't needed it. Um, if it's a bell-to-bell thing, which is what the joint letter was about today,
Mm-hmm.
about keeping, um, the personal technology off from bell-to-bell, kids just have to turn their phones off and keep it in there. Pocket, we can't see it, that's all it's going to amount to. So you're going to have a lot of kids in the bathroom at the same time. Multiple kids in the stall. But you know what? If nobody sees you using the device, you're not using the device. And it's really doubtful that kids are going to be, like, hiding in the bathrooms without social media. They're going to go in the bathroom to text their parent that they don't have practice and they're anticipated to come home, right?
Um, that's the other thing that was in today's memo, is that, um, the proposal also simultaneously would, uh, not allow cell phones in school, but would also require schools to implement procedures that allow parents to contact their kids during the school day. Um, so-
Which is email.
Um, which would be, email would be fine. The other piece to this as well, back on the security, um, just to give you the broad picture of what we're thinking about this, is, um, on the security side of things, I believe I mentioned in May that we now have implemented a full multi-factor authentication requirement. Your, 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 thank you for your support on that as well. Um, but, uh, part of our plan was as well to roll out multi-factor authentication to our student accounts. Um, not allowing students in our high school to have cell phones significantly complicates that effort. And so there are some security implications that, that we're going to-
That's so true. Here's a lot of unintended consequences.
Yeah. And that's something that we're looking for mechanisms to feed back into the state to say, hey, can we think this through together? To think about other ways to do it. Right now, the only technical solution that exists is one that is frankly not practical for high schools and students.
So if, if email is the only way to get in touch with them, that would mean opening up-
Correct.
-the network to external-
That's correct.
Yes, because right now, I can't email my kids.
Yes, uh, we'd have to do that, and, and we're also seeking clarity on whether or not there are specific grade-level bans that do that. Because again, similar to our approach with the laptops, it's, it's really about matching the needs. There's good reason why we have those things blocked based on good practices, so.
Just going to suggest if the initiative eventually goes through, it just, and there's so much data out there that's available, but it might be helpful to have some SEL data that supports why these initiatives are being implemented.
I think, like, if it is because the governor said it, that's why, that's why we're doing it.
I think so, too.
Right, that's it.
But if it, if it's like by, if it's, if it's sort of by choice or by decision, yeah, yeah.
Yes, exactly, then we need data behind it.
Right.
Yeah, we can point out that our classroom teachers for many years have been, many of our classrooms have the wall pockets.
Yeah, the shoe pockets.
Whenever I'm in the high school, I see our kids drop them in.
Mm-hmm.
And that was helping our kids self-regulate a bit.
Yeah.
If you can't stay off your phone during class, put it in the pocket.
Mm-hmm.
And a lot of kids use that. So that was always been our philosophy of helping kids learn those reasons why it's good to not be distracted during the classroom.
Yeah, I know when Mike Senior heard it, but that, that the possibility was coming, I mean, right away it caused anxiety because of safety issues, like, that's the first thing that came to her mind. It wasn't like, oh my God, I- It wasn't like, oh my god, I can't text so-and-so. It was that I, I need my phone if there's an emergency, I wanna have my phone. So that is just something to think about too. And it's anxiety-producing for some of these kids.
And, and if you are a parent who does not believe that your kid should be on a phone and, I mean, you have that parental right to take that phone away. You have that parental right to monitor usage, you know?
Yep.
There are ways that they can help their children with their, their own values.
What Tim said, I think there's, there's something important there to be said for, you know, right now, there are many classrooms at our high school where the request is, if you are struggling to.
Yeah.
To stay off of your phone, please put it in there. It's not a directive to say all students need to. In some cases, there are, in some cases, there's not. So there's a, there's a really strong culture here of gradually releasing the responsibility to the kids and having them be reflective and, and understand where they are in their own development. And that's something that we hope, that wherever the, the legislation goes with this, that we can maintain that. So we can be, continue to be confident that when our kids leave here, that we've done everything that we can to ensure that they can keep their phone in their pockets and be able to regulate their behavior.
Hundred percent, because that's how you prepare them for college. Because colleges don't have cellphone bans, most of them at least. And in fact, at this point, the cellphones are used in classrooms quite actively. They're used for polling, they're used for scanning, they're used for all kinds of things. And so I think, I think that the ideal is to, to teach those lessons, so that you.
Certainly iPads, if not phones.
Without a death.
And every community is gonna handle this differently depending upon the needs of a community and the needs of a school and a district, right? So, you know, just because somebody's doing something in a different way than we are doesn't mean it's right or wrong, it's what's best for that community.
Mm-hmm, absolutely. And we're, we'll keep following that and, you know, we're engaged with a, a number of different districts around just to keep, keep posted on what's going on. And then certainly, we saw the message this afternoon, so stay tuned.
Thank you.
And just one quick, one last question, just because it's such a big line item now over time. The, just the BOSI's technology spend. And I think it sounds like you get a lot of collaboration, there's great expertise and great resource for us. My question though is if you look at the more sort of commoditized stuff we buy in technology, not the consulting, but, but the more commoditized stuff. Generally speaking, if you put aside, put that in the table, put that aside, just look at the gross amount that BOSI's charges versus like what we can get, you know, just going outside. Is it comparable?
That's a great question. The, the short answer is yes. It's comparable to what you would see if you got a third-party vendor to come in and do that. And then that, that comparability kind of becomes moot when you add the aid back in.
For sure, yeah, okay.
We're, we're close. Great discussion.
Nice, thank you.
Thank, thank you, Kevin, and move on to Mark.
Hi, hi everyone, thanks for having me here. March is a time where all the national arts organizations, National Association for Music Education, National Association for Art, uh, Art Education and Theater Education, they celebrate Arts in Our Schools Month. So I'm really happy to be here to talk about these things. I'm gonna start with music and theater. We just finished this week our Barley Players High School production in Chicago, which I thought was a really fantastic job. The, the directors, the students and the teachers all worked together. We had a lot of students in leadership roles as dance captains, as student directors. And these were not just titles, they were actually doing meaningful work up until, including show days. Hey, someone out, we have to shift around, how are we gonna re-choreograph this? And the, the way that our students handle themselves is really fantastic. Uh, our students in the booths doing lighting work and sound work and backstage work, really incredible work. Also, this past weekend, we had eighteen students from fifth through ninth grade in our All-County Honors Ensembles at New Rochelle. We are looking forward to our Disney trip next week with LCC. We have about seventy music students going to perform in Disney Springs and then participating in workshops backstage where they're gonna be learning new music and performing that. Uh, and we just finished up at Wampus, our third-grade hands-on experience where all of our students were getting ready to pick an instrument for next year. Looking ahead to next year, we have a lot of exciting things, some that we've already mentioned to you. Last month, we came to talk about the Wampus Zero Period Plan.
So amazing.
We're really hoping that will help with scheduling some of our students and meeting the needs for our students for all different areas. So we're excited for that for next year. Uh, in the middle school, we've been having a lot of growth in our extracurricular ensembles, our jazz band and our chamber group. Those have continued to grow. Uh, we'll be going next, later this year in May to Six Flags again with them. And that growth post-COVID, we're seeing in skills and also in numbers in the middle school in those instrumental ensembles, which is leading us to adding an extra section of high school band and orchestra next year. So a ninth-grade band, a ninth-grade orchestra back. We think that's good for skills progression for those students. And we're also hoping, I know we've had some conversation about scheduling, that'll open up some more avenues for students to stay in instrumental ensembles. Uh, because we have had some, some tricky movement there. We've been really fortunate, our high school numbers in those instrumental ensembles has been up. In orchestra, we're just about forty students. In band, we had been in the mid twenties, now we're in the mid thirties. And we're, we're projecting, we don't have the numbers yet for eighth and ninth grade, we'll have that next week. We're projecting to have increased enrollment in those ensembles, even with a dip in the overall enrollment in the school. So we're really excited about that. You'll see here in our budget, the one piece, BOSI's is really good for a lot of things. BOSI's, we had been using a music specialist at HCC to work with students and act as co-teacher doing pull-out lessons. They told us this past summer that after a recent audit, that we can't do that anymore. So we're gonna be hiring a teacher to replace that point six. And then the additional band orchestra section is gonna mean one teacher. So that's some of that increase in addition to some reallocation of funding for staffing purposes there. Everything else will stay flat as far as equipment. Uh, we've been able to manage, though some of our repair budgets have increased a bit, we've been able to, to manage that internally. For art, so one thing that kind of bridges music and art is when we do our district-wide music festival in January, what we did last year and this year is we have all the eighth graders stay behind or come early. We have them do a tour of all of our fine arts spaces. Uh, what we found last year is that helped us introduce what those classes are to students. We had a twenty percent increase in course requests for fine arts courses in the high school. And we were able to meet all those. And this year, we had three fewer classes, but we were able to ma- swift, switch some classes around to meet students' needs. So we saw this year, we had more students in sculptural ceramics. We opened more sections to that. We wanted the drawing and painting, hey, can we switch this, you know, to meet those student needs? And our high school art teachers are fantastic, they've all taught everything and they're really amenable to making those changes. So also, very recently in art, last week, we had a student at the World Finals for Jong Koo Tour in Dublin. That was really incredible. Today, we just learned that one student was selected for the National Art Educators Association for their juried exhibition online. It's a national, uh, uh, award. We have a student that is going to the K-12 National Ceramics, uh, piece is going to Ceramics Exhibition. And we just had students last week, we had ten students on display at Katana Museum of Art. So the last few weeks in art, continue to get excellent news. For not only are we seeing recognition here and regionally, but also nationally, internationally, it's really fantastic.
It was something photography too, right?
So today, it was a photograph today that went to the NAEA, yeah. And that photograph, she's won several awards from that. Uh, it was a Scholastic Art finalist as well. She actually had two pieces there, so our students are doing really incredible work. So we're excited about that. For next year, looking forward, we're very excited about our new fashion design course that you all approved in December, thank you very much for that. We, our teachers and our students are really looking forward to that and building on the momentum and excitement around Jong Koo Tour and sustainable fashion. So we're really looking forward to that. We have a student that's already doing some of that fashion work in our AP 3D course, so we're starting to get some of those materials to have, have her pilot out. The things we're hoping to get for next year. You'll see in our budget, we have a decrease in salaries. That is due to, to retirements that we are having for, for long-tenured art teachers. So that is, um, that's what that is demonstrating there. Looking forward, we have a ton of events coming up in art and music. In addition to the Disney trip, we have our National Art Honor Society induction, our Music Honor Society induction coming up. We're having a new Theater Honor Society induction this June. We have a jazz concert, middle and high school jazz concert, AP Art Show in April. In May, we have Six Flags, we have spring concerts, we have our community performances. We are really excited for the next couple of months. We have a busy couple of months and we hope to get a chance to check out some of our students' work. We're really excited.
That's great.
I think I've forgotten more than I've mentioned, but yeah.
That's okay, I think you, you.
We covered it.
Covered a lot.
Were you saying earlier that there's been an increase across all grades in schools as far as instruments and interested in that?
So.
We had seen a drop-off after COVID, all that.
So, um, students are, are in and on a music ensemble through eighth grade, through seventh grade. In eighth grade, there are some students that go to Music Tech. We see a, a shift at Wampus in fourth and fifth grade, which we're trying to mitigate with that zero period. Students feeling they need to drop the instrument because of whatever scheduling issue. So we have been seeing a drop from fourth to fifth grade and then from fifth to sixth grade because of that. We're hoping that zero period will change some of that. Because we have seen an increase in chorus, we have, uh, our middle chorus numbers are quite large right now because of that. There's also, we've had fewer students making it to the high school ensembles. Also, some of that for scheduling reasons are being able to stay. But we're hoping that with the, the additional, we're seeing more kids staying in high school in that eighth to ninth grade, that's where we, we see a movement. We're seeing more of that, um, anecdotally, talking to students and hearing, last night, we had an eighth-grade orientation, talking to parents, it seems we have more students that are gonna come. So, and we're hoping that ninth-grade band and orchestra section will help with some of that scheduling and keep more kids in.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
Good strategies.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
My thank you.
Great. Last but not least.
All right, I'm the closer, so, there we go. So overall, this is my budget with a slight increase, largely driven by an increase in the salary code. Majority of that salary code is due to increasing summer workshop offerings, so I increased money there. We've been seeing a large increase in the number of teachers who are participating in our summer curriculum workshops, largely driven by the change in state standards and many of the district initiatives. A lot of that driven by our newer teachers at Coman Hill and Wampus. We've been hiring a lot of new elementary teachers. And also, some of our curricular focus, which I'll review in a moment. And I've offset that cost a little bit by reducing in some other areas, so that's why you see some fluctuation. So on the next slide, well, there's some pictures on the left. You see, uh, this is a buddies class, it's reading buddies. So it's a second-grade student teaching a kindergartner how to read. So the second-grade teacher teaches the student how to teach reading and then they go teach reading in the garden. So it's a project between a couple of classroom teachers at Coman Hill, which is really adorable. The middle picture is taken from a, that's a fourth-grade classroom and part of our new pilot science curriculum. And I'll talk about that in a moment as well, where students do experiments, they create hypotheses and draw conclusions as they collaborate. And on the right, I believe there are a couple partnerships between our Global Scholars and Wampus. I think this one might have been on the Electoral College. I showed you some pictures on previously. So that's a Global Scholar student teaching fifth-grade students about the Electoral College, which they love to. So to Kevin's point that to show our values and what we put our funds into, you've heard me talk a lot about our literacy initiative, now going on our third year of diving deep into it. So I wanna just highlight a few areas in which my budget is supporting. One is continuing our really deep dive into literacy. You will hear me talk more about literacy over the next few board meetings. Due to our focus at Coman Hill this year with a researcher who's been working with all of our teachers at the grade level, we are reviewing and evaluating our phonics program. It was probably the last thing I wanted to review, but it came up because of where our knowledge and the science was guiding us. So I may be coming to you to talk about our shift in our phonics program and we possibly will pilot a new phonics program next year. So that's exciting for me to talk to you more about in detail. So overall, my budget in terms of all of these curricular areas, this is Coman Hill and Wampus now and I'll just cut to the secondary schools in a moment, is supporting two things. It's supporting curricular materials, so that can include teacher materials, assessment manuals or assessments, workbooks for kids, decodable readers. And the second thing is teacher training, whether that's through in-service courses that we offer, through the summer curriculum work, or through hiring expert consultants that work with our teachers. So that, or those are the two areas you see constantly on the right side. So we'll continue our work with literacy next year, continuing deeper dive into word study, vocabulary, reading comprehension next year in literacy. In math, we're, we have a solid math curriculum. And where we're learning to grow is in the area of both the extremes, the intervention for students, and also looking at the advanced learners and doing curricular work and some consulting around that area. We will enter a third year of a pilot program in our science curriculum K-5. We're going to expand that to include even more teachers. This year is our second year, we brought a lot of teachers, more teachers into it. We'll continue that pilot and also bringing in an expert to help us as well. We continue with MTSS, you've heard me talk about that. And that's really looking at our assessment system and ways to support students in literacy and mathematics. And continuing with character education and our Character Ed program and always providing, uh, training for our new teachers who come to the district so that we can get them up to speed quickly on all of our curricular areas. On the next slide, we, I've talked to you about the shift from New York State into new graduation measures. And we are planning for this guiding us in terms of where we're focusing our professional learning with teachers throughout the district. Well, to focus on graduation measures, things like the portrait of a graduate will really impact K-12. And we want to involve all teachers in that work. So having conversations with the principals now, Kevin is part of that discussion and we're bringing in teams to start analyzing how the new shift in graduation measures is going to impact the things we do at the school. From a shift in assessments as regents' exams won't be acquired anymore, so what is going to be the way we assure that students are meeting standards in all of the required areas? And then supporting the departments in their specific areas. From all of the departments, I work closely with the chairs and directors to ensure that they're getting what they need in terms of the supports of, whether it's materials or whether it's professional learning as well in those areas. And we're continuing through the site-based team to focus on our, our, um, character education principles and how that impacts certainly the social-emotional piece and the piece around how you regulate your behaviors in schools, which relate to our discussion around cellphones. So those are areas that are impacting the secondary level. On the final slide, we hope we get this year's class to graduation. We're gonna wear hats on a beautiful sunny day again, so hopefully we will be there.
Tim, that was really comprehensive, though. I feel like it was very.
I could go a lot deeper, we could have a lot of time.
I feel like it was, it was really easy to see the depth of all those initiatives, just in the beginning.
I think it's important and I appreciate your support and want you to know what you're supporting. We wanna maintain that curricular experience for our students that is getting eighty-nine percent of our students into the top eleven percent of colleges in the country. And we want to maintain those high levels, so that's, that's what your budgets.
I just appreciate too that the initiatives that go on during the summer, so that teachers take advantage of that. We appreciate their time doing that also because it limits the time that we take them out of classrooms, right, during the year. So we appreciate everybody's efforts and, and supporting that.
And I appreciate the teachers coming in and committing to that time.
Yeah, absolutely.
They work hard. And it's a great time uninterrupted where they can really focus on some really deep exploration.
It's appreciated.
Lincoln writing and a lot of new learning that happens.
And I think that since you've done that, there are more teachers at the elementary level who are behaving more like middle school and high school teachers who are departmentalized, right? So and I'm not talking about Dave's departmentalization at fifth grade. I'm talking about teachers gathering together about literacy at a grade level and what they're doing in those classrooms. You know, you think about it, six years ago, you were not doing that.
Right. And we supported these advisory reps, so a rep for every grade level for ELA, one for math and one for science, so they're becoming experts, building up their capacity. And then they turnkey that, whether it's in the summer or it's during the school year.
Because they rely on each other's professionalism as another learning tool, right? It is like we might have this consultant, but it's working together, very similar to what the high school does with departmentalization, that strengthens them in what they're doing. And they know that and they're seeking that themselves. It's really great.
And you're always, we feel like you're always refining this process. So it's great to hear every time you give one of these reports, we hear more and more about details of that, so we appreciate that.
It's really good.
Can I, can I say one more thing about the summer work that's happening too? Last summer, you know, AI was just kinda hitting. We, we had a, an enormous number of teachers come out and spend a few days through our cyber camp process as well, which is reflected in Tim's budget. And one of the most impactful things we asked them to do, well, we structured that day where the teachers could come in and first and foremost, learn about AI and like, what is it actually doing, what's the secret sauce here? How does it actually work? and like, what is it actually doing? What's the secret sauce here? How does it actually work? And then we built into having teachers come to sessions with a lesson or unit that they worked in teams or individually that they were curious about how AI would impact. Like, does this make this lesson viable? Does it make it, do we need to change this? And it was a really rich conversation about what is the core learning? What are the actual skills? And learning that we need our kids, that we want to preserve in our instructional design. And then now that we've learned a little bit about how AI works, how do we now lean into AI? And to the extent it matches the instructional needs of that lesson, how do we redesign that lesson to do that? And that was, we got some of the best feedback from teachers when we gave them the time to work. And if you were to go into the room where we were all, we very intentionally had teams together and Jen, you saying that people, they're working together differently over the summer too. You saw high school teachers sitting with intermediate school or with elementary school teachers, all talking about the impact that this has and really leaving there with a tangible idea as to how to embed this into their curriculum. So that, the support that you give for the summer professional learning that we do is really something that is an amazing opportunity for our teachers and, and part of the defining characteristic of what, what makes us grow. So thank you.
Your parents. I was, I was going to say the same thing. Or at least communicate to parents. I've had questions where people are asking, how can the school use AI? Obviously, we know that we're not just saying, don't use it. So I think that would be a great thing to bring the parents into that.
So they, you've done it at Principal's Coffees with Dwayne.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, so we did a Principal's Coffee last year. Dwayne Smith and I did one last year. And then we also did one just, was it just last week? That we did one as well. And we've been talking also about other ways to engage the community in conversations around AI too.
I know. There's so many questions about like the college application process and having a kid in college. It's so different because each teacher decides, like some teachers consider any use of AI to be cheating. Other teachers are willing to let you use it. Like it's, it's teacher by teacher. So it's really.
But in some cases, the way here, it's appropriately also assignment to assignment. It depends on what is the core learning and that's, that's what's emerging here, which is, I'll say emerging, but it's not anything new. It's what is part of our culture is to talk with kids and develop the parameters around. Just like we were talking about with cell phones where our kids are really good at. They're different, right? Yes, they're going to, they're going to understand why the rules exist and they're going to make sure that they preserve their learning to do that. Same thing happens with AI. Here's what you can use AI for all the time. Here's what you can sometimes use AI for and here's what you need permission to ask AI to do. And to give that framework that can vary by content area, it can vary by grade level and it can vary by assignment as well, depending on what it is. And when you give students the opportunity to have the voice in developing all that, then compliance becomes something that you don't really have to worry about.
Very well said. Thank you.
And that, and then when they go out to whatever they do, they're going to use AI the same way. Because in any profession, there are certain uses for it that are incredibly amazing and efficient. Other uses that could potentially violate principles or law, right? So you just have to be very careful of how you use it, but you're going to use it.
Exactly.
Did you get a lot of questions about it, like in the, in the guidance discussion about AI and the college application process?
We did. And, and there's, there are some colleges that are pretty forthright about how they're using AI in, in their application process. And there are some colleges that are saying that they're not using AI at all. What the, what, what the general consensus is among all of them is that most colleges are using AI to look back at successful applicants that have matriculated into the university and have found success in the university. And they're using AI to crunch all that data to find out what, what should the criteria be for, for applicants? So it's not necessarily only being used to screen applicants, which is what we first go towards, but it's also being used to help colleges refine their criteria.
And that knowledge is important. But you know, going out to campus, every single college and university to say, are you using AI to track admissions? When tomorrow, there might be a university that comes up with an algorithm that gets shared with everyone. And now every, all of this data mining that we're doing to see who is doing it is going to change in a minute, right?
The landscape of AI changes daily.
I think the focus needs to be on anticipating, what is it that AI is going to look for so we can make sure that our kids' college applications and college essays are meeting what we anticipate are going to be things that they're asking for.
And colleges know what a Byram Hills education is as well. And there's some value in knowing also that our, what, what defines the Byram Hills education is also not shifting as well. So you know, it, it isn't as though tomorrow, if there's an AI algorithm that starts to be implemented by a certain college, that somehow the Byram Hills education is no longer valued by that college. They know. There's a lot of historical data for students that we've sent to some top-tier universities. And I think that's a really important piece of context of the conversation.
I want to point out to our television viewing audience that the discussion we're referring to is called the Guidance Discussion Group on March 5th. And you can watch that on bocatv.org.
Thank you.
That's my promo for that.
Our guidance department is looking out. They're looking at that, yeah.
Yeah. So it's a great, was a great discussion.
Yes.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So much.
We're going to release you to your life. How does that sound? Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you. Thanks for having us.
So might I say while we are at this intermission for a moment, it was five years ago, Gina, right? That the Board of Education and the administration decided that we were going to close school now. Five years ago today.
Wow.
March 11th. And we said we were going to close schools down for two weeks.
Two weeks.
And then it was, and then it was two more weeks. And then it was two more weeks. I can remember that saying like, how many more times are we going to talk about two weeks? But that seemed to be like what we were doing on that time period.
Thank you. Good night.
Thank you. And look where we are now.
On that note. Five years.
Look where we are with the music department.
It's so nice to hear that story.
All three of them were just amazing. My superintendent's report, first of all, our boys.
We have unfinished business first. We do. Some second reads.
Oh, yeah. I forgot about that. Should we start by saying that the boys' basketball team won? Congratulations.
Yes. They won by twenty.
Yes.
Wow.
Big win.
So we have six second reads. And that is twenty-two forty-five, forty-three twenty-one point eight, forty-three twenty-one point eleven, forty-three twenty-one point thirteen, forty-three twenty-one point fourteen and eight one one three. Gina, do you want to, I guess we discussed them at first read.
Yep. Does anyone have any questions or?
Any questions? No? Okay. With that then, let's, a motion?
Second.
All in favor of adopting these six second read policies? So adopted.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Gina. I take you to the policy committee.
I'm glad we're not going to be suffering under the extreme heat conditions days.
We got that reference.
We are.
Good thing we got that.
There is no new business. So Jen, I know you're eager to give your superintendent support.
All right. So our chess team, absolutely amazing. First of all, that trophy is bigger than any childhood. New York State's Galactic Chess Championships on March eighth and ninth in Saratoga Springs. We had Keshav placed first in the K to eight under nine hundred section, winning the New York State Championship after competing against a hundred players. What? Chess against a hundred players. I think my brain would be so exhausted. I think that, that fortitude is amazing. They also secured first place in the under nine hundred section with a strong final round. And we have the winning team members, Dashav Miles, Liam, Teddy, Ashton and Yiran. Pretty awesome. They are super excited about that and we are too. And Angelina, again, her work was selected for a national exhibition. Mark was talking about that tonight. Acceptance into the National Art Honor Society Juried Expedition. Her piece is called A Moment in Time. It was selected from over twenty-four hundred submissions with only eighty-three artwork chosen for this particular prestigious showcase. And the.
That was a photograph.
I was just going to say.
That's not a photograph. It's not real.
It, no, it's.
It's not realistic.
I know. It's really realistic, isn't it?
I thought it was a photograph.
No, it's like.
It's because of the camera. It's up to you.
Oh, yeah. I thought it was like, you know, taking a picture.
It's so cool that you get a close to it.
This says, the N A E A has been this organization for visual arts educators for over forty years. And through programs like this, we have national recognition for our students. The juried exhibition will be available for viewing in their virtual gallery from March 11th through August 31st. Congratulations, Angelina. It's like unbelievable. Our Class A, yeah, this is old news. This was last week. Blah, 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 et cetera, et cetera. And tonight we have another show. But I do have to say that when we were at this game, there were so many impressive parts of this game for me. First of all, the way that that team works together. And you know, you're going to say, yeah, you sit there around every single team and every single group of kids, but this, even the parents comment about how this particular group of teammates interacts with each other on and off the court. One of the parents said, you know what? These are actually just really good kids who support each other. And I thought, what a better way to describe a group of kids in a school. And we're fortunate for that. I loved the turnout of students, the turnout of community members, but I mean, the students were at large.
For both games of the game, et cetera.
Community, community members. And then what was particularly touching was all of the alumni who came back to watch. I mean, there had to be like two dozen of them.
Yeah.
Over time and they came back to support the team. Our three MVPs who were at the end of that game, it was just a phenomenal community event. We're so proud of them and especially proud of their playership. There was a time in the game where a player from the other team actually shoved one of our players and had a technical. And, and our kids never reacted, right? Like this is, this is the game and we know that's wrong and we know that the officials officiate and we remain calm. Like, and you know, that's really where you see the rubber hit the road with, with the work that they're doing with them. So congratulations to our boys and congratulations tonight. And we are so happy that you will be in Binghamton on Sunday to play in the regional finals. That's a lot for me to remember. Chicago was absolutely amazing. The talent, the choreography, the singing. Kids in roles that I've never seen them in before, which was so exciting for us. They had an incredible showing Wednesday night was so wonderful. We had so many senior citizens from the community who came to see the play. We're going to be giving them plays to all.
They loved it.
I loved them there. It was fantastic. They had the time of their lives and, and it was really, really great to connect our kids with, with seniors in our community. I loved it. I, I don't know what else to say. It was phenomenal. And I was so excited when I heard that we were in the Journal News for the play and I opened it up and I was like, no pictures? So Journal News, get on it. No behind. It was pretty phenomenal. And that's it. Go Bocats.
Thank you, Jen.
Oh, I'd also like to give a little shout out. We had our, our Byram Hills Wizards game last weekend. I want to give a shout out to the twenty-nine teachers who, and administrators who came to play in that game. And you know, they arrive here at like noon. We have a pizza party. We go over there. We're leaving at like four, sometime after four, four-thirty or something. And just giving of your day to be a part of this community. And the kids were so excited to see their administrators and their teachers playing in the games. Just super fun. I had two assistant coaches. I will just say that Savannah and Michaela were phenomenal. Michaela had her little book with her where she was copying down all the stretching exercises we were going to do with the teachers. And it was great. We were on the court and the girls were leading them in their stretching exercises. And Savannah did a split. And the teachers were like, we can't do that. You know, just to, to have the kids in the, in the community in that way, to have these two girls who were first and second graders who had the personalities to be in a, a room with hundreds of people and be nonplussed by it, right? That they are going to go and talk to the teachers and this, and the administrators who are in the game. They're going to run, they're going to run these stretching exercises in the middle of a gym with hundreds of people around them with no fear, right? Like that to me was the most beautiful thing. And, and the mom came up at the end and she said that she was wondering with one of her children if she was going to be very shy because sometimes she, I was like shy. I don't know who you're talking about. But I want to thank them both for being phenomenal assistant coaches. They made my day so incredibly enjoyable. And thank you to the B H E F for supporting the Wizards and everything you're doing for our district.
Great to do. This must be about the tenth year or something.
I don't, I don't know. But I am such, I am such a bad coach. I should be fired. We've never won.
It's at least twelve. It's at least twelve.
Yeah. And we've never won.
Yeah. I don't know if that was the first year, but at least twelve.
A return on investment for me as a coach. We were closer this year than ever. We had a first grader and a second grader assistant.
Did you play, Jen?
She's the coach.
I have to coach.
Magic Johnson at one point was a coach player.
If you want to pull me out of retirement, I could get back, yeah. I did play in high school.
On that note, any board requests?
Yeah, I, I've been working with the DSG group, the Developmental Support Group. So that's the new group. That's sort of the rebranding of child. But they're also including the preschool population. So it's, it's, they're really a terrific group of moms.
I didn't know that you were working with them. That's great.
Yeah. So I've been meeting, I've been going to all the meetings. And they've gone back to it being more of a support group model, which I think was really, I, I can personally say that, that I found that to be the most helpful when I was going through it many years ago.
It transitioned from that parent supporting parents to more of a district presence, right? Where we would always have our director or assistant director who was meeting with it because it was, it's hard to have meetings and, and it's hard to post about meetings to talk about your child's special education needs if a representative of the district is not there. So their focus now is shifting sort of off of that language.
Exactly.
So that it can be just a parent supporting parents.
And it's, their, their turnouts have been great. The conversations have been terrific. I think people are getting a lot out of it.
That's awesome.
Jill and Meredith are attending the Zoom call. Tomorrow? Tomorrow night?
Soon, yeah.
I think it's tomorrow night.
They asked Peggy to meet with them one day.
They did. They met with Peggy. I don't know when is that? Sorry. Next week.
Do a search.
They're, it's on Tuesday, the eighteenth of April, at eight o'clock. And that's, that's again, it's focused more on the, that one, that specific meeting is on the transition from preschool to, to into kindergarten. That's CPSC to CSC transition. They've, they've decided to break it up a little bit in terms of the, the grades because the issues are so different.
They really are.
And the topics would be very different. Topics of interest would be very different for somebody who's in middle school or high school as opposed to somebody who's coming from preschool to get into, you know, the first, second, kindergarten, first, second grade. So anyway, it's, it's, it's been great. And I'm really enjoying helping them feel connected.
Because after it was like a shift, I didn't know that. And I was like, well, at what juncture do the people who are running that need some support from the district to say, these are things we don't talk about, right? Like, and if they need that support, you're there for that support. That's great.
Yeah, and I think I sort of invited myself into it.
That's great.
But I'm actually, I'm getting a lot out of it too. I'm getting a lot out of it too.
Yeah, you have a lot of experience in the district over many years to support any group.
Yes, they're a really great group. And I'm, I'm, I love the fact that we are helping the preschool community to feel, feel more connected to the district.
Yeah, that's amazing. And there's so much to juggle going from CPSC to CSC. So I feel like there's a lot to unpack for parents. That's great.
There's a lot to unpack, even if you take that out, just going from preschool to kindergarten, right? So taking all the developmental stuff out of it, there's just a lot to unpack. So.
Great, Mia.
Thank you, Mia. That's terrific. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Any communications to the board? Okay, seeing none. Can I please have a motion to approve the Board of Education minutes from last Tuesday, March fourth, twenty twenty-five?
So moved.
Second. All in favor? One up session? Great. And a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting. All in favor?